Good afternoon. Welcome to City Council meeting for August 9, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. Madam City Clerk, could we have a -- excuse me. I'll call the meeting to order. And Madam City Clerk, can we have a confirmation of the posting of the agenda in the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law. And we have Councilmember Matt Fox absent.
Thank you. And we will begin with our invocation. We have Chaplain Michael Thrower. All rise, please.
As always, it is a pleasure and honor to come and present the invocation for this Councilmember meeting. God, we just ask that you just guide the tongues, got the thoughts of those that will be speaking, presenting, or replying to anything that happens today. We ask that you just continue to keep a hedge of protection around our officers, around our chaplains, around our pastors and priests and ministers, our children, our teachers, and all those that are staff members in those departments. We ask that you just guide us and lead us in a way that only you can. Help us to be able to respect each other and to love one another as one race, and that is the human race. We thank you and we love you, and we look forward to your guidance and your leadership in our life. Amen.
Thank you. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
None were offered.
Thank you. That brings us to our initial public comment period then. Public comment during this portion of the meeting are for those items on the agenda for action. Each speaker will have up to five minutes to speak. As always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nathan Murdock. I'm with Rev Renewables, which is the parent of the Delamar Energy Storage Project that's on the agenda tonight as number three. I just want to introduce myself. We were the original developers interested in the parcel that submitted an RFP, a land management process application back last year in September. We've been continuing to work on the project and invest in the project and working on permits and what other elements of the development process. So we're excited for the opportunity to enter the RFP and continue working on the project and working with Boulder City. We've been engaged with Brock Arman Trout and Taylor and Brittany. And we've had a great experience so far, and we look forward to continuing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time. Anyone wishing to call for the initial public comment period? The phone number 702-589-9629. Have public comment, please?
Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. For the record, Fred Volz. The following comments pertain to today's agenda items 11 and 16. For your discussion of the two alternatives contained in Item 11's SNWA PowerPoint presentation, there are several missing considerations that deserve attention. Why is there no estimated range of costs listed for the two alternatives? Surely SNWA has constructed enough large projects to be able to apply a cost range, not a precise amount, to these two paths. For council to have an informed discussion, cost must be a key facet. The suggestion that existing water lines should be repurposed into a distribution network for recycled wastewater begs the question of how potable water will be distributed to the city. Will the city need new parallel water mains if the existing mains are used for recycled water? There is no discussion of this issue in the PowerPoint slides, but hopefully the presenter or city utility director will clarify the issue. The cost of the extensive piping network needed to replace what would be used for recycled wastewater staying in Boulder City far eclipses the roughly $40 million price tag for a new municipal swimming pool complex, if the $2 million potable water pipeline at the city limits at Railroad Pass is a good gauge. Boulder City does not presently have $40 million for the pool complex. In addition, why should a network of potentially new water piping go beyond servicing the big four government water users? The Veterans Cemetery, Veterans Memorial Park, the Municipal Golf Course, and Boulder Creek Golf Course? If there is more processed wastewater produced than those four users can consistently consume, let's build a reservoir at the wastewater plant that could be drawn on during dry years and months. The footnote about providing "legally mining assurance for the use of wastewater piped to Henderson" seems responsive to concerns about promoting new growth. But this council should be wary that if SNWA is providing most of the funding, SNWA will make the rules about the use of so-called water conservation credits, not Boulder City. Given the pro-growth attitude that prevails throughout the Las Vegas Valley without concern for securing new water supplies, Boulder City needs to be concerned about promoting more excessive and unsustainable growth in the region with its wastewater. Another consideration lacking discussion in the PowerPoint is the amount of electricity it will take to pump this volume of water uphill, either throughout Boulder City or through Railroad Pass to the Henderson processing facility. The steadily dropping Lake Mead water level will prospectively lead to less power production in the future from Hoover Dam's turbines. Congested and already committed electricity transmission lines through the region mean transporting more electricity from distant sources cannot necessarily be counted on as a solution. If this pumping operation requires considerable new electricity consumption, where will we secure the needed electricity? As for Item 16's small reduction of water-consuming turf at the municipal golf course, this project amounts to only 12.3% of the total turf and retains all two-plus acres of ornamental ponds. It is an insufficient effort by the city to save water at its facility. The public has not been apprised of a comprehensive and meaningful plan to save water at the municipal golf course, Boulder Creek Golf Course, Veterans Memorial Park, ornamental lawns in and around City Hall, the police headquarters, and Parks and Recreation Headquarters, among other sites. When will we see substantial action on this critical issue that only becomes worse by the day?
Anyone wishing to call?
And I would ask that my comments be added verbatim to the record of the meeting.
The phone line is available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phone lines available? Anyone else wishing to call for the initial public comment period? The phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the initial public comment period?
None were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no others for the initial public comment period, we will close public comment. Move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to accept the regular agenda.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Move to the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I'd like to request the removal of Item 7 from the consent agenda and plan to bring that back at the first meeting in September.
Thank you. I would also like to request Item Number 2 be moved to the regular agenda. And we'll make a motion then to move Item 2 and remove Item 7. Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a split. So we're unable to approve the consent agenda?
No, the motion was to remove Item 7 and move Item 2 to the regular agenda. So the motion was not on approval of the consent agenda as a whole, but the--
Yes, I understand what you're getting at. Anyone wishing to make another motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item 7. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I am opposed. Apparently, that is accepted then. 3-1. We'll move then to Item Number 10, I believe it is. Excuse me, 11. Presentation by Ms. Ross with the Southern Nevada Water Authority.
Thank you very much. My name is Dowa Ross. I'm the Deputy General Manager with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and I appreciate the time that you've given for us to make this presentation today. There we go. Okay. So currently, Boulder City water demands are a little over 10,000 acre-feet per year. The city of Boulder City operates a wastewater treatment facility with an average effluent rate of about 33.5 million gallons per month. The city also has a contract with a local gravel agency to receive some of that effluent at about 267 acre-feet per year, or about 7.25 million gallons per month. And then the remaining volume that's not utilized is discharged to evaporation ponds out into the desert to be evaporated. Boulder City is the only Southern Nevada municipality that does not return their flow of any sort to Lake Mead. So obviously, if you have been watching the news and know, and you can see it in your own backyard, the drought is significant. Lake Mead is at a severe risk of falling to elevation, actually below 900. And that's a critical measure for us because a lot of things meet or come into play. First of all is the reservoir storage is only at 10% capacity. SNWA's first two intakes are above the surface. We do have that third intake. Hoover Dam is unable to release water downstream to Arizona, California, and Mexico. And Hoover Dam can no longer generate power, which Boulder City benefits from approximately 40%. Also, Nevada's allocation will further be curtailed to an undefined amount. We don't know what that looks like. The federal government would make that decision at that time. And it is possible that emergency reductions may result in an allocation lower than our current consumptive uses. So not only are things expected to get worse, this is what it will likely look like for the foreseeable future. What you see there on the left is where we are at elevation about 1041 at the moment. And it's looking, based on current hydraulic, hydrologic models, that we will be at or bouncing around Deadpool by the end of 2025. This is going to go on for what we can see for the foreseeable future. So our conceptual proposal is, given the severity of the Colorado River and its conditions covering everybody included, Boulder City as well, Boulder City's treated indoor water use is far preferable to recovering that than to allowing more than 300 million gallons of water to be evaporated out to the desert each year. To avoid financial impacts to Boulder City, SNWA is prepared to help fund and construct the effluent recovery. There are two feasible methods that are able to be recovering this effluent. One of them is a conveyance to return water to Lake Mead for return flow credits, as it's called. The other is for direct reuse within Boulder City for irrigation. So I'm going to go through some of those. First of all, this is just to look at the information we see from Boulder City. This is your current wastewater effluent by month. And then this is the treated effluent that you sell off to the gravel company. What's left in between is what gets evaporated out to the desert. This is the potential availability of the effluent. So the two options that I mentioned, first of all is what we call returning it to Lake Mead. This would be full return flow credits. This would simply collect Boulder City's wastewater of its existence today. This is not future development of Boulder City. Boulder City's wastewater today would be collected and connected to City of Henderson's wastewater collection system to be treated at their treatment plant and returned to Lake Mead. Getting back to the question that the caller had asked, we have nothing to do with governing how return flow credits are done. Everything that the wastewater treatment plants treat and return go through a meter, and that meter is read and received by the Bureau of Reclamation to know how much water has been returned versus what's been removed. The, upon acceptance of Boulder City effluent, City of Henderson would be then responsible for conveying the wastewater to their treatment plant, treating it, and returning it. So it wouldn't mean a new treatment facility for Boulder City. It would mean delivering your wastewater, and Henderson would take it from there and deliver it back to the lake. So the benefits of this option means you capture 100% of your available treated effluent. It minimizes new infrastructure and any necessary upgrades to existing infrastructure. It's a low operational requirement cost due to the simplicity of the design. There's no vulnerability to cross connection with potable water supply. SNWA respects the city's development restrictions, and as stated before, we are willing to provide whatever you guys need necessary to ensure that this is not in any way speculating growth, that this is not in any way being designed to handle growth, that this is simply to collect the wastewater that City of Boulder City generates today and return it to Lake Mead. The limitations with this option means it requires operating agreement between City of Boulder City and City of Henderson to receive that wastewater and any costs that would be associated with that. But again, SNWA is willing to facilitate all those conversations. Option B would be direct reuse of the wastewater within the City of Boulder City. Boulder City would convey the treated effluent for irrigation of city-owned properties via existing raw water lines. Raw water lines are not potable water lines. I put this in here because the one part I don't know, and I'd have to get verification through the Division of Environmental Protection, is whether or not you'd be able to directly reuse those raw water lines or would require additional, what we call purple pipe. And that's the question that's unknown at this time. But because the effluent flows are insufficient many months, effluent would be augmented with potable water. So this means that just because a park or golf course receives reclaimed water doesn't mean they won't still need more water. In fact, what we've seen is that most golf courses that do receive recycled water tend to need an additional 15% to 20% more than they normally would, simply to help dilute and get rid of the salinity that's within the water quality when you do treated wastewater. So now, the benefits to this option is it utilizes city-generated effluent within the City of Boulder City. It does not require an interlocal with City of Henderson. It capitalizes on existing raw water conveyance infrastructure. The limitations, though, however, it may not fully utilize the available effluent in the winter months. It does require connection with raw and potable water system to supplement those demands. It requires an upgrade to the city's existing wastewater treatment plant to meet the additional irrigation standards and additional treatment that's necessary. It does create a greater operational complexity and higher operating costs for the city at the treatment plant, as well as at the golf courses. There are additional demands needed to be able to manage that water quality that comes back to them. It may increase total water requirements by the irrigated landscapes and decrease turf quality due to high salinity levels. And it does have a higher construction cost, especially if separate distribution pipes are then required. But again, SNWA is committed to assisting with all of these costs, whichever option is chosen. So the next steps, and this is not for votes, just for your consideration. Both options have been determined to be technically feasible. SNWA wants to be a partner with Boulder City to help recover this wastewater. We want to see Boulder City give a little feedback. SNWA engineering staff will initiate any granular project proposals that you would like. We can go through preferred options, including cost estimates and even a kind of a conceptual map to get an idea of what it might look like. SNWA staff will engage with City of Boulder City senior staff to address questions or any issues that were brought up. This information will be presented to the Boulder City City Council, and no agreements will be codified or even taken any action without the express approval of the council. And I'll leave it with my tagline I'm running with today, which is "Don't let wastewater be water wasted." Reclaim, recycle, reuse. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I do appreciate the explanations on this. You know, this has obviously been a topic for quite some time. We know that that water runs out into the desert. There's a little riparian area out there that's been created because of that. You know, I've expressed my concerns before, and the problem is too that we've never really received any definitive information with regard to costs. So when the retrieval aspect of this was first discussed and a price tag was put out there by SNWA, and then the alternative of reusing our own wastewater within the city was discussed, it was that that would be a less expensive alternative. Now, not sure what all was included in either one of those estimates, but that is clearly a factor that needs to be determined. You know, so we've either not received the information, or the information has been received but is not currently being considered as far as what those price differences are. I think that's a significant factor in determining the direction to go on this. The other issue is this retrieval line. Once it gets to the edge of Boulder City, we don't know what might happen with that network. There's already a system that's been installed below Railroad Pass or to that area. You know, that's not within the control of Boulder City. A concern is that there, the City of Henderson has already annexed land in that area with the expressed intent to develop that. That's not something that I hear from our residents as being a desirable outcome. Currently, much of that area is still within the management of the Bureau of Land Management and would not be able to be developed unless they work something out with BLM, which does not appear likely. The Southern Nevada Lands Bill does not appear to be advancing in Congress right now, which would leave much of that area within the control of the Bureau of Land Management. But whatever might happen in the future, we're not going to be able to control what happens beyond our city limits. And that's a concern for me and for many residents that I've heard of. So again, I think we need to be very careful about that. The other factor is, you know, we, at least I've been hearing, things like, oh, you know, the salinity is too high. Something that I asked to be made available to the public and also members of the council is some information that I had been able to find fairly quickly, actually, regarding the use of treated wastewater on golf courses. There's one particular article that's a bit dated. It's from March of 2009, but it actually has to do with golf courses here in Southern Nevada that were using treated wastewater at that time. And this was done by Science Daily, a paper that they had put out. And when they spoke with the golf courses that were using this, they said there was a total of 53 courses in Southern Nevada. I'm not sure exactly the number that were using treated effluent. But when they did poll those that were, 83% of them said that they fully intended to continue the use of that, even courses that have been using that water for several years. So again, I would hope that the capabilities to treat the effluent have improved over these past, this past decade, so that the issue with salinity has been addressed. There are a couple of other articles in here, primarily for Arizona golf courses. One from 2018, where two other golf courses were getting the ability to use effluent down there at their request. They were joining with the City of Phoenix to share the cost in doing that because it was going to lower their overall cost. You know, we're in a situation here in Boulder City where our golf courses are essentially subsidized by the other ratepayers in Boulder City because they pay the wholesale cost of the water, and they're not paying for any of the other charges and services that are necessary, even though they're clearly our largest water users. I think that it was brought out earlier by the person who called in. We're not necessarily talking about putting this water everywhere. We happen to be in a situation where our four largest users are in fairly close proximity to the existing wastewater plant. So I think those are the types of things that need to be looked at very carefully to give an accurate picture. Because right now, we seem to have a very fuzzy picture of, you know, we look at one alternative, and it's that, you know, yes, this looks like a good alternative. And then all of a sudden, we get, you know, people coming up with, well, what about this? What about this? We need to get that put together so that there aren't those types of conversations, that we know what the pros and cons of each one of these might be. The other factor is, if we're sending this water back, it means we're pulling fresh water out of the lake to put on those golf courses. So the fact that we're not recycling our water just means that we're pulling more water out of Lake Mead. I've seen examples of golf courses that use their lake features as storage. In other words, they will treat the water, put it into a lake on the course, and then use that when it's necessary. So I think there are a number of things that are not being talked about. We do have those raw water lines because, you know, way back when, the brilliant plan was to have five golf courses here in Boulder City. So the only debt that the city currently has are storage tanks that were put in for that expressed purpose, to be able to store water for additional golf courses here. They're not really used for any purpose. This raw water system is not-- And when they spoke with the golf courses that were using this, they said there was a total of 53 courses in Southern Nevada. I'm not sure exactly the number that were using treated effluent. But when they did poll those that were, 83% of them said that they fully intended to continue the use of that, even courses that have been using that water for several years. So again, I would hope that the capabilities to treat the effluent have improved over these past, this past decade, so that the issue with salinity has been addressed. There are a couple of other articles in here, primarily for Arizona golf courses, one from 2018, where two other golf courses were getting the ability to use effluent down there at their request. They were joining with the city of Phoenix to share the cost in doing that, because it was going to lower their overall cost. You know, we're in a situation here in Boulder City where our golf courses are essentially subsidized by the other ratepayers in Boulder City, because they pay the wholesale cost of the water, and they're not paying for any of the other charges and services that are necessary, even though they're clearly our largest water users. I think that it was brought out earlier by the person who called in. We're not necessarily talking about putting this water everywhere. We happen to be in a situation where our four largest users are in fairly close proximity to the existing wastewater plant. So I think those are the types of things that need to be looked at very carefully to give an accurate picture, because right now, we seem to have a very fuzzy picture of, you know, we look at one alternative, and it's that, you know, yes, this looks like a good alternative. And then all of a sudden, we get, you know, people coming up with, well, what about this? What about this? We need to get that put together so that there aren't those types of conversations, that we know what the pros and cons of each one of these might be. The other factor is, if we're sending this water back, it means we're pulling fresh water out of the lake to put on those golf courses. So the fact that we're not recycling our water just means that we're pulling more water out of Lake Mead. I've seen examples of golf courses that use their lake features as storage. In other words, they will treat the water, put it into a lake on the course, and then use that when it's necessary. So I think there are a number of things that are not being talked about. We do have those raw water lines, because, you know, way back when, the brilliant plan was to have five golf courses here in Boulder City. So the only debt that the city currently has are storage tanks that were put in for that express purpose, to be able to store water for additional golf courses here. They're not really used for any purpose. This raw water system is not used. My understanding is there's a raw water main that goes right past municipal golf course and doesn't deliver a drop of that water to the course, because it's not hooked up to its irrigation system. So that's not a combining of potable water and raw water. It's two systems that simply don't connect with one another anyway. That, what you mentioned earlier about having the purple pipe system, you know, that's a cost that needs to be looked at. We're in a situation right now where we've actually approved significant use of American Rescue Plan dollars for irrigation work, especially at the municipal golf course. Well, you know, before we start spending those dollars, we should really have a very good idea of where we're going to get the maximum payback for the use of those dollars at that course. Does that mean running a pipe up from the wastewater plant to the public courses? Discussions with Cascata on, are they willing to join in for a lesser cost of the water that they're using? Because they're currently using the raw water that comes in from Henderson, from the Henderson direction, but they're one of the few that are using that. And again, we have this system that runs all over Boulder City that gets very little use. So I think that, you know, and obviously, this is not SNWA's issue, it's Boulder City's issue. We need to get our act together, and we need to get something definite on what is the best way to do this. Again, my concern is, we are, you know, you mentioned we're the only one that doesn't return water to the lake. Well, we're also the only municipal utility, I believe, that runs power, water, wastewater, and landfill in Southern Nevada. There are other communities that have, you know, different arrangements, but I believe we're the only ones that still retain that control. And what we see is that the rates we're able to charge to our residents are lower than what we see in other communities. That tells me that that's a good idea, that we are able to do that, to control those costs, so that our residents get good service at a good price. So I do appreciate the information you've presented here. My concern is that the push continues to be for this retrieval line, but we don't know what these dollars and cents are.
Right.
And I have a real concern of, you know, getting hooked up into a system that's going to go against the stated growth policies of this community that have been in place for over 40 years.
Understand. No, what we're asking is really that next step, to be able to begin that conversation for both options. We will take both options to a full scope and cost estimate. And then it would really be up to the city of Boulder City to make the decision on what you want. But we have to be able to explore all of the pieces and parts of that. When we originally did a cost estimate on the return flow option, that was simply because at the time, we were asking all of the agencies, what candidate projects do you foresee needing? And that was the one that was proposed, so we ran with an estimate. It was just a back-of-the-napkin estimate, nothing more than that. We never did any beyond design. So this next step would really start that kind of preliminary design for both options, including all the way, all the way out to the end-user part of, what does it mean? Additional pumping costs as far as a lift station's concerned versus maintenance costs for your treatment plant and additional costs on the end-users of the reclaimed water? We want to be able to get all of that very transparent in front of you, and at the end of the day, it is your decision which choice you choose. SNWA says both are technically feasible. We are just here asking you to be partners in this community. Boulder City started us. They started the water in this community. We want to see you guys close that loop.
And I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the work that SNWA has done. You provide service to your customers and-
And you are them.
Exactly. As a municipal utility, we are one of your customers.
Absolutely.
I appreciate very much the work that SNWA has done. My concern always is that solutions that are being looked at are not appropriate for Boulder City. They may be appropriate elsewhere, but they're not appropriate for the policies here. And, you know, yes, I do understand our per capita use of water is far higher because of the fact that we do not reuse or return our wastewater. But over that 40-year period of time, where we've had conservative growth, we've been engaged in water conservation as a result of that policy.
And we applaud you for it.
And again, we're, you know, I will say it, that we're a unique community, and the people that live here seem to be very supportive of that. But I also understand that's not the case in the valley, and the work that SNWA has done has been outstanding. You know, this region is by far the most water-conscious region in the entire country. And you have plans to make that even more the case. We would like to be part of that, but I think it's very important that we do it in such a way that it does not impact our conservative growth goals and also provide service to this community, because again, those golf courses that we have are our major water users far and away, and they are being subsidized by the other ratepayers because of the fact that they do not pay the other services and fees that everyone else does for the use of water.
Sure.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I wanted to make sure I read every, I said what it is I've been thinking about this, because this has been a very important topic to me since I was elected. I was hoping in my term here that we would actually see the construction of a solution. I wanted to say, we've been discussing a solution that was offered almost three years ago. There was approximately a $26 million project in the capital improvement plan for the SNWA that, and however, it was understood that there was a likelihood that it would not be approved by Boulder City Council if that project was included in the CIP. It's not a CIP.
The MCCP.
MCCP.
Yes.
So it was removed. Three years ago, we could have been building something so that we weren't putting all that water in our evaporation pond. It just makes me unhappy that we've been doing this. We have to drastically cut our water usage, and we've been talking about it and talking about it. And we use the threat of growth, and we've used the threat, you know, the issue of keeping our rates low. But in the meantime, we are in a significant drought, and we are the only Southern Nevada municipality that does not reuse or recycle its wastewater. That's a shame. That's horrible. I supported this, the option of the sending the water back to the Henderson facility in an article I wrote in 2020 in the Boulder City Review, and it was trampled upon by others. And I've been accused of supporting unbridled growth because of my support of this project. So the question is, and I think this is really important because it feeds into this fear issue, is how much control do we have over where our wastewater goes? That it's going to go from our treatment facility to a Henderson treatment facility and into the wash, I assume, not right into the river or the lake, but it goes into the Las Vegas wash? That can we control that pipeline? Can we control that ownership and say, yes, this is ours? We're going to only put it, we're going to use this big a pipe, we're only going to send X, you know, 1.3 million gallons a day?
Right. Yes.
And we can also control, if we want to sell the gravel, a quarter of that, that we would have control over that.
Yes.
But we're not connecting ourselves to a growth initiative over here, or a growth initiative in the Eldorado Valley, that we have control from the water filtration plant, our water treatment plant, to the Henderson.
That's correct. That line would be turned over and given to the city of Boulder City. It would be yours to control, yours to deny anybody being able to connect to. And as I mentioned, we would size it such that it doesn't allow for growth.
Okay.
There's a certain capacity that these sewer mains are allowed to take, and you can't exceed that. So anywhere even within the valley, if a sewer main's at capacity and somebody right there next to it wants to connect, they can't. They have to extend a new main. So I know with respect to Eldorado Valley, City of Henderson is requiring all brand-new infrastructure brought in to serve them. They're not in any way even considering, or can't even look at this line. So in this option, we would absolutely turn it over to the full control of the city of Boulder City. You guys, you manage your destiny with it.
Okay. I think that's really important, and I think the cost issue is what percentage of the total cost of this would be picked up by SNWA?
Right.
And does that include supporting the upgrades necessary for our current water treatment facility in order to take advantage of that?
Yes. And as I said before, we hadn't looked at the reuse option within city of Boulder City, so we still need to do that. So I don't even have information to begin to explain what would be necessary on the return option. We specked out, you would need basically a pump station, a clear well, and pipeline. We did also look at the opportunity. We looked in all directions. Could you yourselves take it through Boulder City all the way to Lake Mead and get permission to be able to do return flow credits that way? The length was so far, and the amount of money was so much, that this was just a faster, straighter option. And we made sure that if we did do that, that we put some money. Now, we do have money within the MCCP under our resources and conservation area that we could pull into this. We did take this particular project out at the request of the council, but we're here today telling you, we're willing to put money to this, because it is to benefit the lake.
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, I just, if you can't tell my passion on this-
I do.
It's just, we've been talking about this for three years, and I'm concerned because we use fear, this idea of what it could possibly cause, as an opportunity to keep us from doing anything. And that's tragic.
I understand.
It is tragic. So I do support the reuse, not the reuse, the pipeline.
The wastewater return?
The wastewater return pipeline. And it seemed like it was something that we can control. And I think that that should eliminate fear from people that somehow this is going to create unbridled growth, which it would not. So thank you. And I appreciate your presentation. I don't think it's scary enough, though.
I know, I'm not Colby.
I know, I know.
Colby is really good at fearing everyone, yes.
She does a good, good scary one. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Oregonson?
Thank you. I agree with the mayor in that I would love to see a little bit more information on both of them.
Yes.
I would like a couple more pieces of detail, and I don't know if this is possible for you. I heard somewhere in there that reuse would cause us to use 15% more water than we usually do for the desalination of the golf course. So I guess what I'd like to see in there is water use from both, right? So if we're using 15% more water, that doesn't make sense to me to reuse. So I'd like to see how those numbers crunch out as far as that goes. I would also like to see the timeline, because I do feel like we are in a time crunch of some sort, seeing as the lake continues to drop in levels. So I would like to see, what's the timeline for getting this one up and running versus the timeline for that? I also would like to see, we talked about return flow credits. I do know that, you know, that's something that Henderson currently gets, is return flow credits. Would they be getting our return flow credits, because they were processing it, or would that come back to us?
The return flow credits, basically, if you look at across the entire Southern Nevada Water Authority system as an example, last year, SNWA delivered 560,000 acre-feet of water to all of Southern Nevada. Now, obviously, our allotment is under 300,000 right now. We're sitting at about 279 at the moment, and we're pretty soon going to go to 270, if not worse. So the difference, where we're able to deliver more is because we're returning that difference. So the return flow credits are not based on an agency or based on a purveyor member. It is to the authority to be able to say, every gallon returned, we can take another gallon out. So it's that mass balance from what the authority pulls out and is able to deliver to the purveyor members upon demand. So every gallon returned, then we get to take another gallon out for Southern Nevada.
Okay. Great. The other thing that I wanted to ask is, you said there might be some cost, unforeseen cost, for us going into Henderson? And then there are foreseen costs for us doing the reuse. I mean, including employing someone full-time to be out there to take care of the treatment facility. So would it be possible to look at all those uses and understand what the unforeseen cost would be?
Yeah. The only unforeseen cost that we were mentioning is, obviously, you would be given some sort of a fee. What that is, I don't know. We'd have to have that conversation with City of Henderson. But to be able for them to then treat, just like any other sewer customer that they have, they receive and they charge them a fee. So there would be some fee that would be associated with them taking your wastewater and treating it. But we will have that conversation. Part of this next step will be all of these things answered, even getting into actual golf course users, their experience. We have many years of experience with a lot of these users that have used reclaimed water, so they can speak to it very intelligently. And we've also got resources within the Golf Course Association, Superintendents Association, all the data that you guys might need. And then we can actually speak to the people who operate the golf courses, make sure that they understand what that means, and what would that mean to them? Because we don't know what the cost impacts would be to them. So we want to be able to get all of those things filtered out as a full proposal. So all of these on that next step is what we would come back with.
Fantastic. I just want to say that I read an article in a national paper about water levels, and they talked about how Southern Nevada Water Authority is leading the way for recapturing on the whole pack that we have going there, and I want to applaud you in that for looking forward. I myself would love to see us partner together to find a solution to no longer put this out into the desert. For me, quicker is better, maybe. But also want to look at the cost involved. So thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify something. When we talk about this 15% more usage, that's not 15% above what we're currently using, because we're going to reuse a significant amount of that. So this process doesn't require 115% of the water we're currently using. It's just that 15% would have to be freshwater, whether it's raw or potable. So we're not talking about increasing by 15%.
It could be both ways, yes.
We're actually cutting our use by a significant amount by reusing that water. But yes, we may need to add some water. So it's not a one gallon for one gallon.
Right. It's not a one-to-one. You might get, for every gallon, you're going to get about 85% reuse, is essentially how it is. But it is important to note, and just for total transparency's sake, that the golf course communities that are, have historically been on the recycled water system, have requested potable water in extreme amounts, because they needed to dilute the salinity. So it is something that is a very delicate balancing act for the actual golf course maintenance people. They have to become kind of soil scientists and water quality experts at the same time. So it is, it depends on precipitation, heat, the amount of turf that's out there, and what kind of turf. There's a lot of factors that go into it. And so it is not an exact science, but those who do run golf courses and are very good at it are excellent about this. And so that's where that next communication, I would really like to put your experts with the end-users and talk about what have been their experiences, because we don't want anybody going into this blind. Like I said, both options are technically feasible. We will gladly support either one of them. It's ultimately the city's decision. We just want you to have all the information in front of you to make the best decision.
Thank you. And again, getting back to that salinity issue, some of the reading that I've done on this, that's an energy-intensive process to desalinate the water. But as most of the literature points out, if you pair that up with solar energy, then that cost comes down significantly. that cost comes down significantly. We have a lot of experience with solar energy here in Boulder City. So that, again, is another factor, that wherever this might be done, whether it's at the current wastewater facility or at a golf course, wherever the reverse osmosis process may occur, if it's paired up with solar energy, that then brings that cost way down from what previous projects had been costing. I don't know if you're aware of that, but that came out to me in several of the articles that I came across.
No, I'm not particularly intimately aware of any of that, but believe me, as we start to explore these two options, we will dive into everything, not just the capital cost, but operating costs associated with it.
And I would like to point out as well that whatever does happen, whether the water is pumped back into Henderson, that's not just, oh, well, you know, you put a pipe at the bottom of the hill and send it towards Railroad Pass. That's a significant process to be able to generate the pump pressure on that, and you probably are going to need more than one pump. You know, just for our community from the Hemingway Valley, I believe we have four lift stations to get the wastewater from down there up to where it can flow down to our existing wastewater plant. So we're talking more than just a pipeline that would be constructed. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. I mean, depending on, obviously, the total change in elevation and how much we can actually lift with a single pump station, we'd definitely consider all of that. And that was already included in the initial, just as I said, very preliminary, back-of-the-napkin kind of estimate. But again, that would be part of, we would have to get to kind of almost like a 30% design, if you will, a real strong conceptual with a very clear direction of what would be those next steps, be able to make a decision. But if it takes two pump stations or three pump stations necessary, we're doing it right now in the Garnet Valley. We're doing this to return the wastewater from apex area back into the valley because we don't want to see it get wasted. And so we're kind of already doing that, and we'll do it again here if we have to.
All right. Well, again, I would much prefer us to see us reuse the water, and at least from everything that we had heard previously. And I certainly agree that, yeah, this has been three years of this seeming to go nowhere. We need to go somewhere, and especially, as I referred to earlier, these rescue plan dollars, we do not need to waste that money. We need to put that money where it's going to do us the most good, and this project seems to have quite a bit to do with how that money is going to be spent.
Sure.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Obviously, the work that Southern Nevada Water Authority does is probably among the most important in the valley right now. It really is. It is an honor to serve on that board right now, and I do hope that we can find a good solution for Boulder City's wastewater, because it is, as everybody here has stated, it is not appropriate. It is as far as inappropriate as you can go during this time. I'm glad to hear that more information will be presented to us, because I think that that obviously is going to be key. I think some of the information that would be helpful to me is knowing, you know, how much water do we anticipate to use, you know, in these, you know, in the irrigated parks, golf courses? And, you know, with the note that, you know, we may not be able to reuse all of our treated effluent. I'd be interested to know, how much would we anticipate per year not being able to reuse? Would there be other potential uses for that, or, you know, what over time is that going to look like? The other question I had, so we've been talking about pump storage, right? Pump storage, it's not a, it's a net consumer of energy, correct? It's not like an energy-neutral, you know, as far as the hydropower, getting that water back in? Is that a one-to-one, or is in the end, is it more of a, is it a consumer of energy?
In terms of being able to pump, say, for example, return the wastewater to get it back?
Mm-hmm.
That we'd have to look at, because I'm not, I don't have that off the top of my head. But it's actually a very good question, and definitely one that we should explore, because you want to be able to say at the end of the day, you've made a decision, and these are the reasons why and the benefits to this community.
Right. Because if we're using more, depending on how much energy it would take...
Sure.
And how much energy that ends up hopefully allowing us for hydropower, you know, we want to make sure, you know, we need to know, is it better to keep that water in the lake in the first place, or is it better to get it back over the hill? You know, these are some of the things we need to figure out so that we know that we are making the smartest and best decision for our community. You talked a little bit about return flow credits, and, you know, that it's returned, basically, it's returned basically back to the Water Authority as a whole. And then that additional, how it is allocated, then I guess is based on demand, or...
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have a responsibility to supply as you guys have a need. So if you put in your orders for water, we have to be able to return that. It's only if we get to a point where our consumptive use exceeds our allotment or our allowable usage, that's when we're in trouble. We always want to drive down that consumptive use. So for everything we return, we're able to just keep supplying as you demand it. So it's just a big balance, but we benefit as a community, as all of Southern Nevada, for those return flow credits, and that's why we're pushing it in all areas. And I want to be very clear, that is not the authority telling you today, you need to do the wastewater return system. We want to be able to say, every gallon pulled out of the lake is actually put to a beneficial use and not wasted. If we return it through the wastewater system or we reuse it, it's a benefit.
Right. And, you know, that just, to me, because obviously Boulder City's water use demands have stayed relatively consistent over the course. But as the rest of the valley grows, and they continue to make the same conservation, you know, incredible conservation efforts themselves, so their overall water use per capita is decreasing, but of course, the valley does continue to grow at the same time.
Sure.
So, you know, demand, there is always potential for demand to increase, and if our demand stays consistent while demand increases over the hill, and, you know, then it would seem that those return flow credits would likely then be used to meet those demands as our demands meet consistent. So those are other things to consider. And as, you know, we've seen, you know, Colorado inflows as low as 3 to 5 million, you know, over the last few years, you know, that comes down. Our allocation of water is only as good as far as that water is there.
Sure.
So at the end of the day, it's important that, you know, we really have to make that determination for Boulder City. Is it better to make sure that that water is there in Lake Mead for us to use when needed? Or is it going to be more beneficial for us as a community to get that water? And again, that's all going to go back to, how much of that effluent can we reuse? Will we be able to reuse all of it over the course of the year as it dries out more and more each year? Are those water demands going to be there where it would be able to be reused? You know, these are all things that, you know, they're projections and all sorts of things, but...
It's a valid question.
Yeah. So all of those sorts of things are part of the information that I would like to see coming back for us to help us make that decision, because either way, something has to be done. You know, I am not opposed to sending the water back over there to Henderson. We have good relationships with the City of Henderson. You know, at the same time, councils change. That means policies can change, direction can change, you know, and that doesn't always align with what we had planned before, you know? And so these are just, this is politics. This is how, this is how things work, so...
Which is why Southern Nevada Water Authority will be in the middle of it.
Exactly, exactly. And we appreciate that.
Yes.
And I think that that's what is most important, is making, you know, assuring that this is, you know, of the greatest benefit, not just for our community, for all of Southern Nevada as a whole. But as everybody, you know, knows, Boulder City is unique, and we need to make sure that we can, you know, stand on our own as well.
Absolutely.
So, really, I do appreciate all the work and coming here with the information, and can't wait to see what's brought back next.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Again, appreciate this overview very much. It looks like we're finally moving. Councilmember Bridges had mentioned, it's been three years. I know you all have been busy. We've had a little thing called the pandemic over these last couple of years. But yes, you know, we've got these rescue plan dollars. We've got millions of dollars that we're planning to use, that we must use. This is the time. This is the time to strike, and the iron is hot right now. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with the Water Authority.
Thank you very much. So Mayor and Council, with your permission, I'd like to begin just discussions with your key staff within the organization, so we can start laying out both of those options and come back at a future date with some additional information for you.
Certainly support that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number 12. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. Our interim Polycor Director, Jim Keen, will be introducing GCW, who will be giving a presentation. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Keen, your city engineer. We have GCW engineers and surveyors here tonight to give us a presentation on our Nevada Way reconstruction project. This is from Wyoming through downtown around Park Street. And with that, I'd like to introduce Bob Mernan and Joe Yatzen from GCW to give a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Bob Mernan, GCW, 1550... Bob Mernan, GCW, 1555 South Rainbow Boulevard, Las Vegas. We're pleased to be here tonight to present to you the status of the Nevada Way project. We're fairly preliminary in the design. We wanted to get this in front of you to get your feedback and insights and input. With me is Joe Yatzen. Joe's our project manager on the job, and he will be glad to present it to you, and both of us will answer your questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Joe Yatzen with GCW to present the Nevada Way, Wyoming Street to Park Street pavement rehabilitation project. Project's on Nevada Way in the historic Boulder City District. These next three slides are going to be blowups of the project location. Slide three here is by Wyoming. The second one will be towards Arizona, and the last one is on the east end by Colorado Street. Things we're going to talk about tonight are potential for the bistro lighting along the corridor. We have to put in backflow prevention devices on all the water meters. There's a bunch of them that don't have them. So we have to talk about locations of that. We're talking about putting in some electric vehicle parking spots along the angled parking And then maintaining pretty much all the other space, spaces with the ADA parking. There's some sidewalk and curb and gutter improvements we're looking at doing. And we're looking at upgrading the crosswalks, potentially put in some lighted crosswalks, and then doing the ADA ramp upgrades at the crosswalks, and maybe putting in more directional ramps at all of those locations. So this is, this is the area along Arizona Street and down here by Colorado. And we could go back to these when we start talking about the individual items, if you like. The other improvements we're looking to make is to complete the sidewalk around the Wilbur Square Spicentennial Park. We were looking at putting in five-foot sidewalk, complete what we have out there, but with some of the recent changes to the water rules, I think we're looking at potentially having to have 10 feet of area away from the street that doesn't have turf on there, so we could either do a 10-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk with some landscape rock or chat separating between the sidewalk and then the landscaping or the grass. The main reason for this project is to do road resurfacing along Nevada Way. You could see in the picture, we have some alligator cracking of the pavement. So we're looking to actually remove the full pavement with the depth of the asphalt. We are having a geotech look at it and see if we have to do any subsurface repairs on it, too. As far as the pavement markings, we're looking at keeping all of the parking spaces except for four additional electric vehicle charging spots. If we just go back and just show you where we were looking at putting those. So we would have two down here by Colorado Street on the end, and then the other two would be by the water and power station there by Wyoming. And then, you know, we are discussing, you know, the idea of what the electrical vehicle stations would look like. I know we're looking at trying to do art deco infrastructure in this area, but we haven't been able to find any charging stations that have that look to it, and we're still looking as a just representative of what charging stations look like. The crosswalks, we're looking at doing concrete pavers for them, and then having in-ground lighting at them to provide a little more pedestrian safety. I know we just heard the news today, there's four pedestrian accidents, three pedestrians were killed in the valley, so... Part of those enhancements would be replacing some of the bollards at those crosswalk locations. Couple examples here, one that's a little more art deco, and then maybe a lighted one to help identify the crosswalks, too. The backflow prevention devices, so those are those, you know, rocks that you have out there on some of them. The detail on the right is just a standard box. Some of these locations are where a lot of the properties have seating and stuff for their restaurants. So we're going to have to try and find places where we kind of tuck them out of the way a little bit as we put these in. The bistro lighting, that's just a general discussion on it, and I don't know if we would do this with this project, but maybe we put in some of the infrastructure for it in a future date. Another item that we're looking to do is put in some bike racks in some of the knockout areas, just an example of what we could put in there. We did have a public meeting for the property owners on May 18th. There's probably roughly around 20 interested parties there. Some of the items of concern that came up were the trucks that are parking in those spots and sticking out into the thruway. We looked at that. They stick out about a foot. The thru lanes are 12 feet width. It still works. I think it helps keep people driving a little slower through there, which is probably a benefit. Another issue is access during construction. So we've talked about, actually, for construction, doing half of the street at a time, so there's at least, make it one-way during construction, so there's half the parking spots available, and then using the streets behind Nevada Way for the other routing of the traffic. There were questions about the electric vehicle charging spots, if there's, if it's too many or there's too few of them. I think we were just looking at starting with four and see how that goes. And then as far as the sidewalk around the park, there were concerns about how the car show and how to get the vehicles onto the park, so we're looking at, we'll put in some driveway access as part of the project so they can still get on there. And overall, the properties are, property owners were really supportive of getting the project done. We're estimating about 2.5 million for the project, and I have on here, construction start October. We've got to get moving if we're going to do that, and we think about 120 days for construction duration. And then, thank you. If you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Couple of concerns I have is, you know, we've already discussed those bistro lighting, and I was surprised to see that that was being represented on Nevada Way. I don't know if it's, can't tell on Colorado Street, but within our capital improvement project, that had been determined that it would not be in those areas. Also looking for feedback from our Historic Preservation Committee on whether it's appropriate at all to have that, especially on Nevada Way where we have the verandas that come out almost to the street as it is now. So that's one issue. The construction of that sidewalk, only on that one portion of the park, is there a particular reason for that?
Well, there's only a partial sidewalk at the park right now, so this would just be...
Yeah, I don't think there's any perimeter sidewalk at all right now at the park.
There is right, right on...
Up in the northwest corner, southwest corner?
Yeah, you could, so on the west side there, just on the west side and then around... and then around to Colorado Street, there's a little portion of sidewalk.
So this project would complete it all the way around?
Around the entire park?
Yes.
Yes.
And once again, I would want to see our Preservation Committee provide some input on that. You know, again, that, most people in Boulder City refer to that as government park, because it was like one of the first things built here in Boulder City. So those are two major concerns I have. With the charging stations, we're going to see a lot more electric vehicles. So is four enough, but also then does that prohibit other vehicles from parking in those spaces? That is going to be a concern. You know, we constantly hear the fact that we do not have enough parking. Our uptown area wasn't designed, you know, it was designed in 1930s. That wasn't the idea that everybody had a car at that time. So that's always an issue. Losing any parking spaces is always a concern. So I would want to be, you know, very conscious of that. But also the historic nature of our uptown area, once you start changing things, they don't go back. And that's a very big concern of any of these projects, is how's it going to look when it's completed? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things that first came to me was we recently had a discussion about signage and marking for the same area, and I know part of the discussion that we had was, you know, we are starting to see kind of a cluttering on our sidewalks. They're getting very congested. And so that is one of my first concerns when I start, you know, to see all this, you know, with the bistro lighting and, you know, of course, the backflow and all these things that are... Well, the bistro lighting's not needed. I know that the backflow is something that is. But making sure that we are being very thoughtful about how we move forward, making sure that, you know, everything kind of flows together, that there is a consistency in design to that end. I know with the bollards that are being considered, you know, the old ones, they have a very distinct design, you know, wrapped around them. I think that is an aesthetic desire that I think we should continue to have. I do also think that our, the trash receptacles or what the trash goes into have a similar shape to them. So again, there's a consistency in design throughout there. Now whether overall that's going to change, I think, you know, that's fine. But I think, you know, what's presented right here is the example one and example two, I think are, in my mind, they're a little bland, you know, I think compared to what we do already have. But I do think that if we are going to change, I think we should look at any other elements of our city sidewalks that use that same shape or design. We should also want to match that. So again, there's consistency in thought, that it's not just throwing everything at our sidewalks, which is what it kind of feels like we are or have been doing. With regards to the electric vehicle parking, I know you had mentioned in front of the DWP building. You know, I think a lot of the people who do use the DWP for emergency aid and other things, you know, they are not driving electric vehicles. So perhaps being moved further down towards the other end of the park there, still in that downtown area. These are just things to consider on where the best placement is, especially if only electric vehicles can park there. We just want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community. Because as the mayor said, parking is always the issue that gets brought up, which, you know, comes to mind also when we talk about ADA parking. You know, only four spots there out of the nearly 80 spots or so. That's a very small percentage, and we have an aging community, and we have a lot of people with needs that need to be met. And, you know, they need to have just as much access to our downtown area as the rest of the community. So, you know, if there is anywhere in which, I know one ADA spot probably takes up about two or so, but I think it's something that we should be looking at, because there is other parking available around the downtown area. It's not right there in front of the shops, but we need to meet the needs of our community as a whole. And the only other thing I would say is, I guess I've got two more things. I really don't like the fake rock look of these things. I think it's tacky. I think something simple, even something maybe, you know, you can have art on it. I think that's even better, but I just think plastic rock looks, that's just my own personal preference. And finally, with regards to the sidewalk around the park, yes, I think it's important when we talk about our historic areas, especially something like the park, we should have input from our Historic Preservation Committee. But also at the same time, you know, we are in need of removing turf, as was mentioned. You know, I think being consistent with the existing sidewalk, if we are going to go that direction with that five-foot, I think that would be better than having the 10-foot sidewalk. And I think we could find other means of meeting that. If there does have to be additional turf removed from that park at that time, we can look at those designs, and I think our city would be, we have people in there that can help with that as well. So anyways, otherwise, I appreciate the work that's being done. The biggest take home for me is less clutter is better, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. And I'm going to cover one thing at a time, but I'm going to start with something that's of utmost importance to me. I have a friend in Boulder City who's blind, and she has taught me a tremendous amount about the spirit, not necessarily the law of the ADA, okay? And I think it's important that in your entire design concept, that somebody walk around the business area of Boulder City and blindfold themselves and see what you bump into. The corners are, get cluttered, you know, between signs and light bulbs and, you know, like Councilman Adams was saying, you know, we're talking about the signs and... It's important that there be access at street corners. Secondly, I have this thing about truncated domes. And I don't know if that's what you were talking about when you said directional ramps. Is it...
The directional ramps would be just you direct the individual straight across where the crosswalk is.
Yes.
The truncated domes are the yellow...
Yeah, right, but if you look right now at the corner of Nevada Way in Wyoming, the truncated dots, the directional ramps will take a blind person diagonally across traffic.
Right, so the directional ramps make sure that they go straight across where the crosswalk is.
Right, so that's really, really important, because it was built, these were put together by people who were thinking wheelchairs. And they weren't thinking about where a guide dog was going to take their person. I, also in the process of changing the light fixtures, not, I'm not talking about the bistro lighting, but I'm talking about the light fixtures, that we would use, if we're going to be doing that, are we going to be mindful of the direction we're going in terms of the Dark Skies Initiative? That we won't just be replacing those lamps with current, you know, what we've changed the lights to, but to move in the direction of controlling the lumens and the color. That's real important. The pavers at the intersections, would those be pavers or stamped? Are those actual...
They could be either. We haven't decided.
Okay. And, because I know that's real important to keep the consistent look of the downtown area. I also am not a fan of plastic rocks. Now, however, having lived almost 10 years kitty across from Wilbur Park, I see the advantage of the sidewalk, because if somebody is walking, they have two choices. If they're walking all the way around Wilbur Park towards the Reclamation Building, there is no sidewalk there to walk on. You have to walk on the grass or you have to walk on the street. So the Arizona side of that park, you can walk on the sidewalk on the bicentennial park side. But if you go around north of that, you can't. There is no sidewalk there, so I support that idea. I'd like to see a parking lot with charging stations, something to get the chart, so that it's not taking up places. The emergency aid is open most mornings from 9:00 to 12:00, and the clients use that parking right in front of the LA Power and Water Building. And they sometimes even park as far down as Frank Crowe Park. So that is definitely something to take into consideration. And that's it. Just be careful of all the obstacles at the intersections, and remember, sometimes people can't see what it is that we're putting up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. So most of what I was thinking has been covered from less clutter, probably, and a more conformed look down there, so that it looks consistent. Also, I have the same friend who is blind, and it is a concern for her, and it is hard for her, and she loves to be very independent, and she should be. So pavers overstamped. But also, when I look at the LA Water and Power, I think that that is part of our historic district. And the charging stations don't, to me, seem like that's going to fit right there. I do believe there is a possibility to put it in a parking lot close by. We do have some at the city, and then have signage that states that that is over there for them for that availability. I do, too, have a little bit of a concern with such limited parking there. And when we start, I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be done. I've looked, I've ridden my bike on the alligator roads, not comfortable. So it does need to be done. The concern would be that those businesses don't lose business because of that. So I'd like us to be really mindful about how we do it because of the limited parking in that area. A lot of people might just go, oh, it's not worth it. Look what's going on. So making sure that there's plenty of signage to tell them where alternate parking would be during those time periods. So, and, you know, a lot of what they said, as far as let's make sure it's not cluttered down there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things that have come to my mind with the other discussions. I think Councilmember Jorgensen has excellent idea. You know, we have the other parking plazas that are within a block or two of Nevada Way. Think about putting charging stations there rather than on Nevada Way. As far as no one at Emergency Aid having an electric vehicle, I wouldn't ask that question in a few years. I think we're going to see a lot of electric vehicles. But again, what we have in our, especially the Nevada Way area, that was constructed with a specific type of architecture. I would call it eclectic. It has been changed over the years, but, you know, by changing these things, we lose our historic architecture. So by changing what's there, you know, we've talked about the plastic rocks. I don't know anybody who likes a plastic rock. We've talked about the bollards that have the southwest design. Yeah, I remember when those went in and everybody said, what the heck is that? So I think you've come up with some good ideas. You're constrained on what you have there, because it was built in the 1930s. One other issue that has been a real issue for a lot of folks is the last time this was done, the approach of Arizona Street to Nevada Way. Is there a plan to redo that intersection there?
So I don't know if Jim wants to talk about it, but there was another firm that was hired to look at different options of realigning Arizona and Nevada Way.
Well, it seems like the problem is that little island right there. It forces people coming east on Arizona to come to that intersection at an angle that makes it very difficult to look to your right and see vehicles coming from that direction. If you have to be going right, there's a separate lane that would take you that way and give you good visibility to the left. But the problem is the way you approach that intersection makes it very difficult to see to the right.
Mayor McManus, we will be looking at the concepts that have already been drawn up on that. I'm sorry. We'll be looking at the concepts that have already been drawn up on that and seeing if we can refine those and improve that intersection with this project.
And lastly, I would say, you know, it was the other part or the further end of Nevada Way going down towards Fifth Street. When that was done, it's been several years ago, the idea was same thing, that businesses would be able to remain open and all that. It wasn't 120 days. It almost put a couple of them out of business. So they are highly dependent on having people drive right up to their business, get out and have lunch or dinner or whatever. This is going to hurt them no matter what.
Yes, the 120 days is really an aggressive schedule.
I would say that's very aggressive, yes.
For even, for having to do it half at a time, but we're doing this with the understanding that we can't, we can't have the properties impacted for a long duration. So the construction costs may go up, but I think we should really look at trying to hold a little firm on the timeframe that we have here.
I'm sure they would appreciate that, because again, they're highly dependent on that. You know, if I can't drive and park right in front of the business I want to go have lunch at, you know, I'm going to find another spot, so I'm sure they would appreciate that. And Mr. Keane, did you have something you wanted to mention about the Arizona intersection?
Yeah, on that intersection, a lot of the layouts or the three or four layouts that we have received that these guys are going to be checking out for us even more, it did unfortunately eliminate parking to get the visibility. So it took out quite a few parking spaces. Turned them from diagonal to parallel, so you lose about three or four spaces per, you know. Another thing on the 120-day contract, like Joe said, that is pretty aggressive. But also on the other end of Nevada Way, we redid all the water and sewer as part of that. We're not doing that on this project, so that will help reduce the amount of construction we're actually doing, so.
Well, I appreciate your optimism that when you start pulling that street up, you're not going to find a problem.
Sure, oh yeah, sure.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Again, the street certainly is in need of some work, but let's make sure the project doesn't put anybody out of business and we end up with a good product. Appreciate your input on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item 13. Mr. City Manager, did you want to introduce that?
Sure. We have guests here from the Southern Nevada State Veterans Home here to share information about the Heroes for Heroes Volunteer Initiative. We have Eli Quinones, Administrator, and Amanda Carer, Program Coordinator and Veteran.
Hi, Eli Quinones. I'm the Administrator of the Southern Nevada State Veterans Home. And as you know, we've been dealing with this thing called COVID. COVID has not only brought illnesses and death to our community, Veterans community, but also isolation. Isolation has been a huge, huge challenge for the population, Veterans population, not only in our home, but in Boulder City and the state and the country. And so we have adopted, we have adopted a program called Heroes for Heroes, but we're trying to pair heroes with heroes. So we adopted this program. We didn't start the program, but we sort of inherited the program. And we have been promoting it very aggressively throughout our community and throughout the Henderson community. And Amanda Carer, which is our volunteer coordinator, is going to give you an outline of what this is all about, but it's really, really important to us that the community understands this program, because it's really helping a great deal many, many of our citizens and veterans in our community.
Thank you for having me here today and for your valuable time. So the Heroes for Heroes is an opportunity to connect with a veteran in the community who may feel isolated or is interested in making a friend. The Heroes for Heroes program was created to help solve social... The Heroes for Heroes program was created to help solve social isolation to senior citizens throughout the entire state of Nevada. It began as a collaboration between NEST, which is the Nevada Insurance Support Together, and UNR Social Services Master's Program. Soon after the launch in 2021, they reached out to the Nevada Veterans Service Department and asked if we would join with them to help reach our veteran population. In January of this year, we were asked to take control of the program without the assistance of UNR and the NEST collaboration, which we accepted. And now, we help serve Nevada veterans that are homebound and living in the Southern Nevada State Veterans Home. My co-manager and I have spent the last four months revamping the volunteer training to focus more on veteran culture and move away from the focus set with strictly virtual contact, giving volunteers multiple ways to connect with their veterans and build a meaningful relationship through phone calls, video chats, letter writing, and in-person communication. We ask each volunteer to commit one year to the program, take one to two veterans on, and make contact at least twice a week. This program helps meet the needs of those individuals that want to volunteer their time, but they're too busy to give up in-person volunteer hours during the week or on the weekends. A new piece of the program we're adding is called Our Heroes Helping Heroes. With this initiative, we are hoping to partner with our first responders and military organizations throughout Nevada. We think this special bond between the two groups due to both giving parts of their lives dedicated to service will make it a more meaningful relationship. We have already begun our outreach for this program with presenting to the Washoe County Sheriff's Department in May, resulting with two officers onboarding that month. And we're currently onboarding three more officers from the Washoe County Sheriff's Department. I've reached out to the Nellis Air Force Sergeants Association, which I'm going to present to them next week, hopefully to onboard more of our active-duty military community. And next, I'd like to reach out to the Boulder City first responders, then move out to Henderson and Las Vegas. We have tried to make the process of becoming a volunteer simple. I know everyone's really busy. We do an application, a background check, a mandatory training that can be either done by Zoom, or we can send an email out where we reported the training, and it's about an hour fifteen minutes long. Then we'll match the volunteer with a veteran. We're both beginning to reach out to the community and bring awareness to the Heroes for Heroes program, which is why Ellie asked me to present to you tonight. You're all leaders in this community that our Southern Nevada State Veterans Home is a part of, and what better place to start? Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Dr. Quinones and Amanda, I know, you know, some of what you've all been through out there over these past few years. It's been very difficult. You've done a fantastic job of keeping people safe out there and yet still keeping people in touch with any family that they do have. I think that, you know, recently, the city put up on our website all of these different things that people can volunteer their time for. I'm hoping that that will get some mileage on programs like this. Certainly, we have many people who do volunteer their time in Boulder City. And I think the more knowledge we can get out there on a program like this will be very beneficial for both residents here, but also the residents of the Veterans Home. Any other questions or comments?
You know, I want to say, I've only been with the home for eight months, and I'm amazed at the support that Boulder City gives us. No, no matter who I call, groups, I don't even have to call anyone. People just reach out to me daily. We have so many residents that come into the home that want to volunteer, give their money, their time. So, thank you all so much for constantly letting us come up here.
And again, it's our pleasure, and I know our residents, you know, they care for the Veterans and Veterans Home out there. They want to see it be a success. So, anytime you would like to, feel free to come and talk with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we'll be seeing you soon, I think, for your. Thank you. All right. Item number 14, introduction of Bill Number 1917. Anyone wishing to make an introduction?
Yes, I move to introduce Bill Number 1917 by title only. What?
Waive the reading.
With the reading?
Wave.
Waving the reading. So, I haven't done this in a while.
Thank you. Introduction of Bill Number 1917, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, Amending the Boulder City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Ways and Property, Chapter VIII, Water Utility Regulations, and Chapter 14, Boulder City Water Conservation Plan, and Title V, Building Regulations, Chapter VI, Swimming Pool Code, to modify and establish additional rules and regulations regarding water conservation. And Bill Number 1917 will be considered at the August 23, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Item number 15, matters pertaining to Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. Michael Mays, our Community Development Director, will be handling this item with the public hearing and consideration of the resolutions.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Boulder City has an interlocal agreement with Clark County. And that agreement stipulates that of the Community Development Block Grant Funds that the county receives, 3% of those funds come to Boulder City. Of that 3%, 85% has to be used for capital projects. And so, over the years, we've come back to the council to update five-year capital improvement plans. And so, you have two resolutions before you tonight, 7494 and 7495, which modifies those two five-year capital plans. The main impetus for the shifting of Community Development Block Grant Dollars for your consideration tonight is the fact that St. Jude's, which we had almost $800,000 budgeted for their healing center, has let the city know that they no longer need those funds. They're looking to other funding sources to complete that project. And so, you will see in the revised budgets for those two five-year plans, the dollars are being redirected toward the Lend to Hand Project and the senior center improvements. And I can answer any questions, and as City Manager indicated, it does require a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. And again, as you just mentioned, it is, requires a public hearing. So, questions at this time should be regarding specifics. Questions or comments beyond the specifics, we can address after the public hearing. Any specific questions for Mr. Mays at this time? All right. I will open the public hearing then. Anyone present in chambers who would like to speak regarding these resolutions? All right. We will take any phone calls, anyone wishing to speak on these items? The phone number 702-589-9629. This is a public hearing on matters pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant Program for deleting a project and amending the capital improvement plan for the CDBG funds. Anyone wishing to call, the phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received regarding these matters?
No comments were received.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no one for the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. And we can now move. Any questions or comments regarding these items? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7494?
I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7494.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Now, Resolution 7494.
I'd like to move to pass Resolution 7495.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's also unanimously approved. Brings us to item 16, Resolution 7496. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. So, our Utilities Director, Joe Stupitz, will be handling this item. But I do want to say, this is a small piece towards a greater whole of what we're trying to accomplish here with water conservation. It's very exciting. This is one small step that we're taking tonight. Next meeting, I'll be providing an informational presentation on all of the pieces to achieve that goal of being the example, setting the example as the city in water conservation here in Boulder City. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This item, item number 16, is a potential interlocal agreement with the City of Boulder City and the Southern Nevada Water Authority for the conversion of approximately 721,000 square feet of irrigated turf. This turf has been identified, and the municipal golf course is outside of the general play area. And the Utilities Department is committed to furthering the water conservation efforts to reduce our per capita consumption to ensure both the water supply and the energy supply of Lake Mead is kept as full as it can be for our residents. So, we've estimated with the designer, Mark Raythert, who designed Boulder Creek Golf Course, that this would estimate a reduction of approximately 96 acre feet of water per year. So, you know, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
No questions. I just want to thank Mr. Stupitz here and staff for all the hard work that they've put into this. As has been said, this is just, you know, one small step, one piece of a very large puzzle. These things do take time. I understand that there is a desire for us to get moving, and I think everybody here has that same desire. But, you know, we are working with Southern Nevada Water Authority to make sure that the efforts that we make are valuable ones. And so, those things do take time, but I'm happy to see that we are moving forward with this. And I can tell you Southern Nevada Water Authority is, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I know that we're required to get into four acre feet. Is that what it is with our golf courses?
That's correct. So, the Southern Nevada Water Authority passed a new water budget for all golf courses getting water from the Colorado River. Currently, the water budget is 6.3 acre feet per irrigated acre. That has been reduced to 4.0. So, basically reducing the, about by a third. So, this will further help get that, the municipal golf course, to that goal of that water budget.
So, this that we see before us will get us to the four?
This alone, we don't believe will do it. The irrigation system is in need of redesign. It's a system that's antiquated and not efficient. So, this is one step towards getting the golf course towards that goal.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yay. Thank you. Yay. And anything that moves us in the direction of the reduction of our water, especially the non-functional turf, is awesome. And eventually, a sprinkler system or an irrigation system that would allow just micro-irrigation, right, instead of, you know, large pieces all having to go on at the same time, is that?
That would be the goal, yes. Because right now, the system, if you need to water one area, several heads need to be on at the same time. So, this would be more functionality and less water would be used in the future beyond this.
I'm curious, is there a plan? Is there, you know, on paper, even in pencil, an attempt to get us down to that four? You know, in terms of the irrigation system, what needs to be replaced, how it's going to be done? I mean, assuming we don't do, nothing else happens if it's just a matter of the system or removing more turf. Is there a plan to get us down there?
So, this would be kind of phase one. The next phase that could get us to that reduction amount, and there's potentially additional 10 acres, including the practice range and holes one through five, that we could further reduce turf that could get us to that amount.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Just to clarify, though, it's, we're talking about the four acre feet per, we're talking about irrigated acre. So, even if we got rid of everything but one acre of grass, we would have to get that amount down to the, that four acre feet of water value, correct?
Correct. So, SNWA, they, you know, they count your irrigated acreage in the beginning, and then as you remove the turf, they don't reduce it. So, your total acreage stays the same for your water budget.
And it includes the water features as part of that?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate getting this started. I certainly see areas, if we look at, I believe it's page 387 of our packet, has a diagram of the municipal course and the areas of turf that are going to be removed. I certainly see areas there that, you know, looks like more turf could be removed. I'm almost certain that within the rescue plan dollars that we've received that are dedicated or the guideline state are to be used for water projects. We had designated a significant amount of money for irrigation work at the municipal course. You know, it seems that we're not doing this in a cohesive way. If this turf is going to be removed, what is diagrammed here, that obviously is going to cause the, or have a need for changes in the irrigation system. And then if we say, well, we're going to do some more turf removal later on, or identify other areas, and then we have something running where we're trying to design this reworking of the irrigation system using the rescue plan dollars. I don't know when it comes together. I appreciate Mr. Teder's comment that some additional information will be presented. You know, again, I know that you're still relatively new. I don't think you've hit your one-year mark yet with the city. But, you know, with the money, with the work that needs to be done for design and getting things actually started, it seems that we need to come up with a plan that says, okay, here's what we're going to do. Now plan the irrigation, now do the turf removal, now do this, all at the time, rather than saying, well, we're going to take some out, but then we'll come back later and we'll take some more out. But what does that do for the plans for the irrigation system? When does that get worked into the funding of that irrigation system? You know, we've been talking about this for well over a year. The legislature had passed that law well over a year ago. We knew that changes were coming. I look forward to hearing this comprehensive plan and seeing where we're going to go. You know, we're talking close to 3/4 of a million feet of, square feet of grass that are being removed in this. That's a significant amount. I believe you mentioned that was, what, 96 acre feet?
Yes, 96 acre feet per year.
Okay. In reduction, do you know what the usage right now is? You said that...
So, like, we have monthly usage in millions of gallons... So like, we have monthly usage in millions of gallons, and I can kind of get you, in potable amount. I don't have it for the year, so I know we've had a wet last couple of months.
Hopefully, somebody remembered to shut the timers off.
So for the city golf course, for the month of July, on the meter was 52,752 million gallons.
Okay. And the number that I'm looking for here, when we say 96 acre feet, that's a significant amount. But what percentage reduction of water usage at the course is that amount?
So I'd have to come back and get those...
We'd have to get a spreadsheet out.
Yeah, get those figures. But this is just the first step in this plan. So you mentioned that this is the, frees up the funding and gives us some flexibility with the inter-local agreement to kind of plan that into the project. Doesn't pigeonhole us into this being the only one.
I understand.
So, but, yeah, I can come back and get those for you.
Okay. You know, what I'm getting at, and I'm not saying this is any one individual's responsibility, is to get things moving. We've been talking a lot, we've got these different pieces now with the rescue plan dollars. We now know, S N W A has told us, this isn't a goal any longer, you're going to do this. So we have a lot of things coming together right now. And as I had said earlier, when we had the presentation from S N W A, this seems to be the time where we have to make some very significant decisions about significant dollar amounts, and how that's going to impact the future going forward for a considerable amount of time. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. My question would be, what came first, the chicken or the egg? So what comes first in this that you're presenting to us, and with the idea of irrigation needing to be revamped? What would need to come first in this process so that we could be most effective and use our dollars and our time the best way? And I know that we also talked about not wanting to shut down the course as a whole, because then the revenues that come in and the people that play there wouldn't completely be shut down. What do you see as that process?
So this is, I mean, just kind of for the inter-local agreement, ideally, it would all be done at the same time, similar to like a water service project with road repavement, that you have the opportunity to do both. So that would be the ideal scenario, is that it would be done simultaneously.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to provide some additional clarity on the inter-local agreement. The agreement itself is not binding the city to the specific areas of turf that would be removed. The agreement is just locking in our reimbursement rate, essentially, for that turf. So that's what the agreement accomplishes.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Bridges?
Now, that sort of answers my question. What we're talking about is, we would remove it and get reimbursed for the cost, that 1 point, 1.2 million dollars.
We get reimbursed for the amount of turf and square footage that we remove.
Right. So we're not paying out of our budget or our funds for the removal of this turf, or the conversion of this turf to water, what's the word, water-efficient landscaping, correct?
We would still come out of our budget, we just get a reimbursement.
We get reimbursed for it.
Yeah, that's what this inter-local agreement is for.
Okay.
And under this agreement, we'll be able to be reimbursed up to 1.21 million.
1.21, okay, great, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7496?
I move for approval of Resolution 7496.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Stupitz, thank you. Lot of grass out there to pull out. All right, that brings us to Item 17, City Council Appointments. We have one term on the Historic Preservation Committee that has expired. That position, Madam City Clerk, would you like to explain the openings?
Certainly. We have one position open on historic preservation. That position is currently held by Blair Davenport, and she is interested in reappointment. She also meets the requirements of the standards of interior and preservation in a preservation-related field. We do have other applicants that have also asked to be considered. And you can see from there, it doesn't appear that they meet those requirements. And if you decide to go that route, then we would just ask for guidance from the State Historic Preservation Office, and ask if an alternate could be appointed.
Thank you. And the CLG that you're referring to, that Certified Local Government, the Department of Interior Standards does specify what those are. Ms. Davenport is an employee of the Park Service, and her position there is with cultural affairs and cultural matters. I will be happy to nominate her for another term. Any other nominations for the Historic Preservation Committee? All right, all those in favor of having Ms. Davenport serve another term, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so Ms. Davenport is reappointed to the Preservation Committee. And now for the Planning Commission, Madam City Clerk?
For the Planning Commission, we have one member who resigned from the committee, so we have an unexpired term ending January 1st, 2025. And in addition to the applicants that were included in the packet that was published, there's two additional volunteers, and those are before you and available to the public.
Thank you. Again, I would like to thank Tom Marvin, who is the Planning Commissioner who has resigned. His experience and expertise on that committee, I think, were extremely helpful. So we do have an opening that would expire in 2025, is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I would like to place into nomination Maureen Oshinbach. I think that Maureen has a background in planning, and would be a good candidate for this position. Are there other names for nomination for the Planning Commission? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Lorene Crum.
Thank you. Any other names? Councilmember Adams?
I'd like to nominate Judith Duchesne.
Thank you. We will take any other names. All right, we will take these one at a time then. All those in favor of appointing Maureen Oshinbach, please raise your hand. That's one vote. All those in favor of appointing Lorene Crum, please raise your hand. That's two. All those in favor of appointing Judith Duchesne, and that's one. So although that does not represent a majority, it does represent the total number of votes.
That's correct.
See, I can do math. All right. That will bring us to Item Number 18, City Managers' Report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we have the Claims Paid and Financial Report for June of 2022. There's nothing of note to report this evening, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tetter regarding the City Managers' Report? All right, thank you, sir. Item 19 is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during the final public comment may be on any issue. Again, each speaker will have up to five minutes, and we do ask that they be civil and concise. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in the final public comment period? All right, we will take any phone calls. The phone number is 702-589-9629. This is our final public comment period for the City Council Meeting. This is the final public comment period for the City Council Meeting. Anyone wishing to comment may call 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment period?
Yes, I have one.
Please proceed.
This comment was submitted by Andre Haynes. Commander Andre Haynes, founder and CEO of the Armed Forces Chamber, proudly presents Armed Forces Chamber Shindigs, sponsored by Patsy Brown, candidate for Clark County Public Administrator. Shindigs include business expos, business mixers, health fairs, military birthday parties, and more. Shindigs occur in Boulder City, Henderson, Las Vegas, Mesquite, and North Las Vegas. Shindigs are held weekly on Wednesdays from 1,500 hours to 1,700 hours. Shindigs are open to the public and free to attend. Partners include Las Vegas Clark County Library District, Martin Luther King Jr. Senior Center, and Nevada Department of Business and Industry. Supporters include the Asian Bar Association of Las Vegas, the International Chamber of Commerce, Las Vegas W O N Rotary Club, Montford Point Marine Association, Captain Eddie Hicks, Chapter Number 46, Nevada Commission on Minority Affairs, Nevada Women's Business Center, Patsy Brown, candidate for Clark County Public Administrator, and S C E Federal Credit Union. For information, visit Armed Forces Chamber DOT dot com, oh, dot com, DOT dot com. That's ArmedForcesChamber.com. These public comments are approved by Commander Andre Haynes.
Thank you. With that, we will close our final public comment period and move to Item 20, Council Reports. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. Just my regular, that emergency aid is prepared to assist residents of Boulder City facing an emergency with assistance with rent or utilities, and they also have an ongoing, very well-supplied food pantry for those in need. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
I also have nothing to report.
Thank you. I was at Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority meeting this morning. The news, I would say, overall, is positive for Las Vegas. One of the things that was done this morning was to renew a contract with a firm that works with airlines to try and get flights into Las Vegas from different destinations, and they have been fairly successful with that, even with the pandemic. There are currently, well, last month at Reed International, and you do have to call Reed International and not McCarran, and he made that mistake, so shame on him this morning. But we're all used to calling it McCarran. The number of passengers that came in was the highest ever. The, that's a pretty spectacular number, that's going back to 2019, was the previous high. The number of airlines now that are coming into Las Vegas, there are 31 airlines from 146 different domestic markets. So those are cities all over the United States, they're bringing folks in here. The number of seats on airplanes that now come into McCarran is 15% higher than what had been occurring prior to the pandemic. Another positive is the wedding business in Las Vegas. They have a campaign, Forever Happens Here, got a huge boost from J Lo and Ben getting married in Las Vegas. They pointed out that they were able to get their license and get married, all within some time period of like two hours or so. Affleck put a video out showing that he was able to change into his tux in a bathroom located somewhere that had some scratched-up mirror. But that video, or the video that was done of that, resulted in over 1 million impressions on social media for Las Vegas. The campaign that they have right now, called Vegas On, has resulted in 42 million impressions this year so far. So they do a great job there with social media. I know that our city staff recently met with them regarding the website that the Convention and Visitors Authority funds for Boulder City. I look forward to seeing that better utilized here in Boulder City. That is a top-notch advertising team in there. They are able to draw on many resources that I think can benefit Boulder City. We see the resulting work they're doing. The Magic Show, which is an apparel industry show, is occurring right now. Unfortunately, the attendance there this year is about 30,000, which is still a very large show, but that's down from 80,000 in 2019, prior to the pandemic. You know, it's going to take a while, but they are working very hard at it. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.